We're in the hall of meetings to order. Uh, roll call.
Sheenley.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Tanger.
Here.
Oshberg.
Here.
That's your responsibility. Alright, uh, so we have an application for an area variance from St. James Church. Who is speaking for the church? Share with us, um, what you're proposing.
Do you want to go here?
Yeah, you can stand up, whatever. Sit, stand, press the button, alright.
Are you sure that everyone's got a copy of the package?
Yes.
The first entry is, uh, a Google map. And, uh, what we've been doing is trying to get more parking spaces. We've sat down and talked to three, um, architects to try to make our current parking lot bigger, and, uh, with no success. So we sat down as a group and looked at various places in our property where we could put additional parking. Uh, there's three alternatives. Number one is parking in the back of the church. And number two is alongside the rectory driveway. And number three is the one that we're looking for variance on, and that is to park vertically uh, in front of the rectory and, uh, Holy Mother statue. Alright, um, alternative number one, uh, both, one and two, we have to do a lot more fill, um, total blacktop, both, um, base coat and top coat. So that's going to actually be expensive. So if you look at the three alternatives, number one, since it's mostly blacktop today, um, it will be less expensive per parking space than it is to put the parking lot in the back or on the side of the rectory. If we do parking in the back of the church, we have to eliminate all the trees. That means that we eliminate every, uh, our ability to have vents in the backyard. Uh, by talking to various people at the parish, and that's the alternative that they're being sent against because they like to have a backyard for activities. If we chose alternative number two, that's parking alongside a rectory, um, driveway, we wind up with a parking lot that is right up against the Holy Mother statue. We tried to find a better place to move the statue to, and we couldn't agree, so, uh, we decided that would not be conducive to, um, having a parking lot right up against the statue. We then looked at, uh, constructing, and by the way, that will net us out a total of fifteen parking spaces. And the last one, one we're after, uh, will give us twelve, that's six on the west side of the, uh, rectory driveway, and six on the east side. And I was asked to look at, um, uh, probably more material and contacted the landscape architect from the, uh, from the park, and he suggested that I not do that. Cost and the fact that you can't use a normal, um, plow truck to topple snow, and it doesn't handle salt at all. That would mean that we'd have to hire a plow person that had a brush instead of a plow.
Um, let's ask any questions of clarification on what we've seen that you might have? Of what's in the proposal?
I'm looking at the drawings and I don't, I'm confused. I'll be answering.
Okay, what happened was when they, the drawing requires that you print it on legal-sized paper. When they, when they copied it, they reduced it to eight and a half, so you, the parking spaces on the left side of the drawing are chopped off.
Over here.
Exactly.
Okay.
How about if I go up and create the other sides here?
Um, how far does the land extend? I'm looking at your parking number two, okay? We have twenty-seven feet, because that's the distance of the parking plus the second driveway.
Correct.
How far does the land continue from that twenty-seven feet to your boundary?
Uh, I don't know.
Approximately, is it? Is it, are you right on your boundary line there at the twenty-seven feet?
No.
Because you're saying you have six parking spots here, it must go additional.
Right, because to the height.
Okay, but what you have there is that's where you have your statue too, would have to be moved? Or it'd be done right on top of your parking?
Not to the roof of the parking, but for the parking alongside of the driveway.
Right, that's what I'm asking about.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we can leave it there, but it would look terrible.
Now, let me ask you this, the sidewalk that would be moved, you'd be removing the present concrete sidewalk?
Correct.
And you'd be replacing it with a concrete sidewalk?
Correct.
That is farther into your property, approximately how far?
Uh, eighteen-five and five, eighteen feet.
Right, but from where it is now presently?
Right, from the edge of the road, it would be eighteen feet in. So there's eight feet of blacktop currently, and we would go five to the current draw, the walkway, five feet for the current walkway, and then that's where the new walkway would start.
So the walkway is moving five feet?
Right.
Okay, five feet in from where it is.
Exactly.
And then the idea is inward, then how would you connect it to the present sidewalk it's on either end? Is it going to curve?
There's a jog. There's a jog.
Yeah, I see the jog, but is it going to be curved? Is it going to be rectangular or is it going to be? So you're coming here and you're going there and there?
There's a curve.
Right, and this one here.
Correct. This is a brand new mark on the walkway down there.
So does the present sidewalk continue with this one right here?
Today it does.
It does.
It's very across.
And the turn would be going up the pine wood, or the pine grove sidewalk to the new sidewalk?
Yes.
So, okay, that's just a measurement line there, then?
Yes.
So the property line must be over here?
Yes, over there.
I have a question for you. I was wondering why you feel like you really need to do this, just because there's, there's, seems to be plenty of parking in there now, with the church. There seems to be that at the parking, the other churches in the neighborhood all have, none of them really have much parking, but people seem to have a lot of spot. I just wonder why you chose now?
We just changed masses, and we're averaging now a hundred and thirty people a mass. And the parking on the street goes all the way, both sides, all the way down the street.
So that's what these pictures are of?
Yeah, I tried to do that with those pictures.
And the other thing is that they went from three worship services, three masses, to one. So the people who attend the three different services are, now are all coming to one service.
Although some keep, there still are three services in the par, in the district. And people do go to, some people do go to the five o'clock on Saturday of an interment who used to go to the Truanceburg. I see a lot of Truanceburgers up there. So not everybody is coming just to the one.
Well, vice versa, the people from Interment are coming to St. James.
Alright, we'll, uh,
It is.
We'll ask the, um, only the applicants to answer our questions directly, and then in public comment, people can, can talk, and there are a lot of times. Um, other questions and clarifications at this point, we'll, we'll have more as we discuss the traveling. What else do we have?
Here's my question, ultimately, how many spots would you love to have? Scott is the, how many spots would you want?
We'd love to have the number that you recommended on the sheet that you gave me that says for each, for the number of pews we have, you give us so many parking spaces. We'd like that. And I didn't sit down and calculate that, so I'm sorry.
I guess what is your question, would, if, if you guys, if you got, uh, what was it, number one, number three, would you be then coming back another time and asking for, let's say, two to be added?
I would not. I don't plan to do that, but five years, ten years from now, who knows?
Uh, any other questions for clarification at this point? Is your present parking lot lined?
It is.
It's lined.
It is, but it's faded.
Um, what's the width of your parking places?
Eighteen.
Okay, nine by eighteen. Is your intention that this new parking would be lined?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any of you guys have any other questions? I understand.
Would any of the parking be handicapped accessible?
One, it's already there.
So that would have like an extra space on the side?
If, we've got a handicap spot right now.
Is there now, but none of the new proposed particular ones?
No.
I mean, you don't see that in this proposal three, it'll affect the trees that you presently have?
They won't.
It won't affect that, you're saying?
Yeah, well, that's why you see a landscape plan that shows.
Oh, are these new trees?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought these were present trees.
No, no, these are, the, the ones in yellow are, are marked, like.
The ones in, the ones in white are white. Do you have two sugar time crab apples?
They're going to go in front of the church on either side of the sidewalk.
So those are new?
Those are new, and then two in front of the rectory.
Those are new.
And the one in front of the statue, the autumn.
Autumn leaves.
Right.
Okay, so if you have present trees, are you going to remove it from the tree?
Yeah, two chair drees.
Okay. And then replace them by these trees?
Right. The landscape architect came out and said that the chair trees are in bad shape, so, we're going to do something, alright, come out of line.
Other questions that got raised? Anything else? Well, if you have any comments? Alright, thank you. Let's open the public hearing. You've got to have a motion.
Yes, yes.
Have a motion. I've not even been doing this.
How many votes over the public?
Second. Second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Alright, uh, anyone's allowed to speak, but we ask this for your name, and you have three minutes to comment on the project.
Camille Toronto, you don't believe in activists anymore, do you?
No, no.
Oh, that's why I'm on, uh, we're going to be on the internet. Okay, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, the stormwater has infiltrated our sewer system several times, and I know what you're thinking, what does this have to do with building a parking lot? But MRV hasn't been able to find out where this infiltration is happening. So why do we actually need any additional, I mean, I know of those, St. James is only requesting twelve parking spaces, this village doesn't need additional partscape and its potential for stormwater runoff. Um, this application for variance should be temporarily tabled until the stormwater infiltration issue that we have happening with our sewer, our sewer system is resolved. And also, I was thinking, you know, looking at this plan going, if you're putting them that close to the church, they should all be, at least the first six closest should be handicap accessible. I, should be for handicap, and they're not going to be able to the way it's written as planned.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. David Fontenilla, twelve South Street, uh, Truanceburg. I'm an adjacent property owner, and I just would like to say that I've just got this notification, well, I picked up my mail this afternoon. And I wonder how many of my other adjacent property owners that I don't see here may be in the same situation where they really didn't have any notification. My next comment is that all of the other churches in the village seem to do fine with minimal amount of parking. They park on the streets, uh, the Presbyterian church has no parking lot at all. And people do fine. The library is open for people to park their cars on Sundays, and, um, both the Presbyterian, the Methodist, and the Catholic church can use that, and it's an easy walk-through to the back of the, the church. In addition, we live in a residential neighborhood, and right now, the St. James rectory is very nice. It's a Greek, uh, reliable property, and it's got a nice park, lawn, and some nice trees. And now they're proposing to pave, I guess it's eight feet in to the lawn, and make parking spaces out of that, uh, which will not be infiting with the residential neighborhood, and will only get used one Sunday morning out of the week. And so I am against this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Someone else?
Yes. Alright, I'm Jack Katz, thirteen South Street, and, um, Tammy was going to answer the first part of, uh, David's question, and.
I didn't want to cut into his time.
No, no, I understand, so I'm just asking now, uh, what that answer would be.
The answer is, I apologize, they went out late. Um, I had five meetings that I was noticing, I dropped the ball. Um, but with that said, um, there, uh, it's done as a courtesy. All of the postings were done in a timely manner at our village website, at our regularly posting areas throughout the village, as well as on social media. So I just wanted to apologize, I did like to know that they were late in going, they were late going out. Um, but I did hear from a couple of the neighbors today, they got them late as well. Um, so I just wanted to say I'm sorry, and that was me.
I just, I feel badly for the people that might not be here, you know, to, to make any comments because they didn't get it or haven't gotten their mail yet.
Well, and again, it was in the newspaper, and it's been posted every few weeks.
I'd like to make one more comment. Uh, I, two weeks ago, I had a comment, uh, discussion with the head of the building, Muslim Grounds, I think she said, Kathleen Rourke, or Rourke, or. And she told me that this proposal, that she was trying to get this proposal withdrawn, and then all of a sudden I see that it is, it's going to be put through. Do you have plans to implement this project now, or is this for a future time?
That's, that can't be part of the open discussion here.
Okay, well.
We're talking about what's happening. All we can deal with is what's proposed before us, and then you have the right to comment to the proposal that's before us.
Can I ask, how long does a variance last?
Well, the variance gives permission for the applicant to do what they propose to do. So if they build a parking lot, we assume the parking lot would be there until they no longer have the parking lot. It's not a, it, it, it's, it's, it's an area variance, not a use variance. They're not asking to do something, they're asking to have something. So we'd be granting them whatever permission to have, you can have this or you cannot have this, is what it looks like. That's what an area variance is, that's what we're dealing with.
And usually they have six months to implement that after getting approval.
Yeah, reasonable time to begin the project, you know? You don't get a, you don't get a, yeah.
You don't, it's not forever, that's why I made.
Well, it's, it's permission to pursue their project. You don't need to be, okay. That's right.
That is right.
Alright, yeah, someone else? Uh, let's go on the back corner of the board.
Tom Pecky, uh, I, uh, I guess what concerns me a little bit is the, uh, it's a pretty active street for people, children walking on, and I'm not sure, uh, much of a inconvenience or danger that is with the, uh, change in nature of the sidewalk now, so.
Uh, over here, yes.
Janice Fassard, um, I'm also concerned about the sidewalk. I use the sidewalk on, uh, Wick Street to travel, and I think coming up in front of cars and roaming around is a little awkward. We don't see that too often in the village, or definitely not in my neighborhood. And the second thing is, um, the parking lot, current parking lot has some pretty serious drainage issues, and constantly DPDW is probably there about five times a year to address issues in that particular parking lot. And by creating more, um, parking spaces, I, we have, are creating curvaceous surfaces that I think will only add to the problem in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Um, you've already had your opportunity. Uh, well, you only had it there, so go ahead, we'll get you a call.
To add on, uh, I mean, I think we need to take into consideration the once-a-week, uh, usage of it as opposed to the everyday usage of it. That should be a factor in your deliberation, I think.
Anyone else? Thank you. Go on.
Hi, I'm Josh. This was an email that I received late this afternoon from an adjacent property owner. Erin Fears.
Anyone else who were in public comment? I'm always running close public here. Can I have emotionally close public here?
You can make a motion, but.
Alright, can I have a second?
Well, second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Alright, public comment is closed. So did everyone get a chance to read the email?
Yes, please.
Right.
We hope you, uh.
Should it be read into the, alright, I'll read it out loud. Uh, Tammy, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm able to make public comment via email, I ask that some of the parking be shared with the neighborhood when church is not in session. Erin Fears? Fourteen South Street.
House adjacent to the parking lot, yeah, wondering how.
Right, do you have a couple?
Alright, so what we're dealing, gentlemen, is we're open to section seven oh one point four, um, Parking Design Standards. Point, section one says there should be no parking allowed in any front yard, side yard, or rear yard required in setback areas except in established driveways. This would be front yard.
I think they're number three, actually.
They're number three, that's the proposal they're asking us.
That's what I was really confused about, because they're like.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They're asking for number three, they didn't have to share one and two, except that we would probably ask if you have anything else.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, so from three, they're looking at something that is parking in the front yard. It is to some degree established parking already, because there's parallel parking that's there, but they're looking to expand it. Section two says the minimum allowable dimensions of a parking space are nine feet by twenty feet. They're proposing eighteen feet, um, and the minimum standards are twenty feet. Parking spaces for designated for persons with disabilities should include, but they're not adding disability parking here.
I think, I thought they said it was one.
They, already existing, but not part of the new construction, adding, adding additional there. Uh, travel aisles for vehicles, but those are not applicable because the road is the travel aisle. Where proposed parking lot is larger than nine spaces inside, there should be a landscape plan, there actually is a landscape plan for this, of adding trees, and it looked like there's a future shrub plan of beds. And they talk about the type of trees, um, height and maturity of at least thirty feet. I have no idea, a crab apple, rose too, or a hornbeam, or a maple.
Maple?
Is that what it is, a hornbeam? That's like small prairie. Um, and then all off-street parking, that's what this is, should be paved surface or covered with gravel, so it has to be well-drained, and should be provided with necessary access drives. All parking areas should be maintained in a well-kept condition. What do you see as the issues, um, in these six points that we should start a conversation about?
Um, I think that, um, this one is along the lines of, um, the, the space, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, because they're perpendicular and not going to flow traffic up the floor, um, what would this actually look like, you know, when, when services let out? I mean, could this cause, um, could this be, uh, sort of a traffic issue when all of these are backing, when the cars are backing out at the same time?
Right, because we're going to assume people are pulling in, which is easier to do than backing.
Right, more even backing in.
I thought about that as well, what kind of, what kind of additional turn of radius do you really need to pull into a nine-foot-wide parking space when you're right there? Well, it, it's fine if you're coming from the opposite side, you're across the street, as opposed to when you're on the right side and you're trying to turn.
Right, plus it's going to be parked, parked, parked on the other side of the street traditionally, and there will be a lot of, a lot of people.
And the people are walking down, bike, team, whatever, it's already outside of there.
Okay, so that's, um.
Safety issue.
Yeah, that relates to this idea of it really being in the front yard?
Yeah.
And where it's located. I, I wonder also about the, the, we have the regulation here twenty feet, um, as opposed to eighteen, I don't know what the average cars are, but, uh, I know in parking areas where they've made the parking as minimal as possible, there's always bleed over. The bleed over here is either going to be on the sidewalk, or it's going to be in the street. And it's going to be in the street where they're not presently bleeding over, because that area is parallel parking and they're off the street, but this might bleed over onto the, onto the street.
When we came up with the twenty, it hasn't been that long since we came up with the twenty feet.
That was revision in two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's a pretty.
Because I think it was about eighteen feet prior to that, before the revision.
I, I know, like, in parking lots, I see the number of, you know, very large SUVs that will stick out.
Yes.
I don't know what that's like.
That's a perfect way to people.
There you go. That's your answer. That's forces.
My daughter takes two parking places and parks way away from people with her expedition. I, I know that. Um, let's see, uh, actually, six, seven feet. I think the issue of drainage is certainly an issue. Uh, from the standpoint, we've dealt with this on, on other projects and, and other issues that have come before us, um, I think anytime you add additional parking, you're going to have to deal with where is the water going? It's fine if the water goes toward the street, if the street has within it the drains that then carry away, as opposed to, now, the other thing you could do is the drainage could all go into their yard, and then they would just have to deal with it, you know, you know, soaking in, it's not a huge amount of extra pavement there and going in, but is the sidewalk going to create a barrier to water flowing? If the sidewalk sits above the, the paved surface, then the water's going to flow possibly to the sidewalk and then shoot down one way or another. Where is it going to go? It's the grade of the land, I think. I think, I think anything moving forward that have, have to be addressed is where water's going, what's the water there, and what is the situation of water flowing in that neighborhood? If it's already an issue, I mean, I don't know if it's an issue, we have to get confirmation from our DPDW and the village here, what they've actually, what they're dealing with, and have some information from them onto, um, what's the present water problem, issue, and where would the slope be here, and where would additional water go? Because it's better to deal with it ahead of time than to come back and now you've got to mitigate, because you're flooding neighborhood properties. We have enough of that that just happens because of the way the village is built, that water moves around. Are there other issues that you see here? What do you think about the sidewalk? Both the aesthetics, the aesthetics is an issue, the aesthetics of the sidewalk, and the, and maneuverability of the sidewalk if you're going and making, right, that's why I asked if it, you know, if it's sweeping or something, then it's maybe, um, not as much of a deterrent, um, because it looks like it'd be moving about five feet out of alignment.
Sure. You'd need a little walk-in there during non-services, probably walk right across the parking lot.
Yeah. Well, like the parking lots we have in the builds that don't have sidewalks built through.
People wouldn't walk in the street.
Well, that's not, that's not good there.
I'm guilty of that, I think I'm the worst.
That would, the, the, you know, I, I think the issue of the sidewalk would fall under, or is it the idea of a landscape plan, the ideas it's supposed to look, have a certain look? I don't know if that's the, that's, it's just another issue in there.
I actually have a question to the opposite at this point. How many parking lots do you currently have?
Three.
Between your big parking lot and.
Between your big parking lot and.
No, just the big parking lot.
So that doesn't count what people are parking on the street?
No.
Okay. How many, how many seats do you have inside the church?
About.
About.
So 124.
124, okay, because if you look at the parking, the requirements in 701.1, you see further down, is it just assembly?
Where?
Uh, halfway down the page, there's one, we're going to be here.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Five, one's top of my seat, you said 100?
No, I, I have to correct that, I'm talking off the top of my head, I wish I could give you an exact number, but I believe it's 164, St. Francis in, in America has 105, and I think this is 164.
Are you, can you look through that math? It's five into 164, I think.
Yes.
Twenty. Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thirty-three.
So, so they have, they basically have what's required.
Right.
As they're building a new church, and they're putting 160 seats in, we would say you have to solve the issue of 30 parking places. The reality is people who attend church don't attend in five per car.
Right.
Some husbands and wives drive separately, I know. It's not because they're fighting.
Sure, it's not.
It's just coming different times, and one resident truck. If you look at the photos, there's probably along that property, an additional maybe 10 cars are parking on the other side of the street that's not connected to their side.
Right.
I'm assuming it looks like there's 10 cars in there.
And you see, I'm making sure there's six, seven cars parallel apart.
Yeah.
Along there, of course, there's a parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, four, there's another street there. And looking opposite direction, there's another four cars in front of the rectory.
Yeah.
In that spot.
Yeah.
You know, that's either the overall person.
Well, my concern I have is, I know, we don't really set precedent, but even other churches in the town don't have, they don't have the torque, and so we say, okay, you can have parking here in front of your church, then what about this church company, say, well, we might maybe move our sidewalk and get parking out on South Street, and the Protestants, oh, we want to move our sidewalk and park it at Main Street.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, fortunately, there's just too many red lights in this whole market, I can say it.
So, so if I'm, if I'm hearing what you guys are saying, for many of the issues, I'd like to have more information on the, on the issue of water. But I'm not comfortable with the aesthetics of, of, and the safety issue of just trying to pull it off the street into perpendicular parking. There's a reason why streets have parallel parking or angled parking. An angled parking is, is obnoxious in how leaves out how it, it functions, it's worse. You need more land to do, I was reading the rates on, on angled parking, you need even, you need an obnoxious amount of land to do angled parking, as opposed to parallel parking, though it's easier for people purely passing.
No one parked between the lines.
What's that?
No one parked between the lines and angled parking, as well as our reasonable one in front of the larger batch of.
Right, right.
And we're talking about an hour a week, or an hour and a half, we're not talking about a business that's, you know, that's 40 hours.
Well, there's the two issues that way, though, so for an hour and a half, the parking meets their needs, but then for the rest of the week, the parking is there, and aesthetically, it bothers people, the rest of the week, it looks ugly.
Exactly.
If, if, you know, I'm not saying, I'm just saying next time, so it's almost that if you needed it all the time, it would be more appropriate to give it than trying to figure out an hour a week.
It would make more sense, right.
Yeah. To, to try and solve it for that period of time. Do we want to pursue any additional information related to the issue of drainage? That's the only thing that I would see where we have tabled this and come back as we get some information directly from our GPW, or are you comfortable just moving ahead through the five questions of this way?
Well, the other issue might be the fact, and I know this was unintentional, but some people, some of the neighbors would not found out about this, and it may not have been, maybe would have liked to come tonight, but could not express their, that might be another reason for changing the table if you're willing to do that.
Legally, we're not required to do that because we're legally not required to inform anybody personally about an issue.
But we want to be.
No, no, normally, we encourage the people who issue, talking to all their neighbors first. When they, when they bring first application in, they duck down and everything, do that for me. Yeah. But didn't answer the question, do you want to walk through the five questions? We don't even have to settle it, but let's walk through the five questions.
Okay.
All right. All right. We should consider whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties will be created by bringing in the area variance. Undesirable change.
I would argue yes, because there will be a lot of disruption, and I think that the traffic, even for that limited period of time, is gonna be dangerous when people back out, or people are driving through the streets. So I, I think it's, I don't think it's gonna improve the attractiveness of the great street.
Because of the fact that everybody rises and leaves at the same time, in the nature of this, yeah. When you're talking about the safety issue.
The safety, because it happens all the same.
It all happens at the same time, yeah.
They all rise in the 15 minutes each other, all new in the 15 minutes.
Okay, um, okay, I, I agree with you on a, a, a yes on that.
It's a consensus.
It's a consensus, yes.
There's also the, the traffic, they would want to buy too, that'd be confused by the backing out as well.
Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than this area variance. Have the benefit be found in another way, I don't know if the side yard parking would still need an area variance or not. I don't know.
Yeah, it depends on how many feet it is from the side yard setback.
Yeah, really, so, so, you know, proposal two probably could be done without it being addressed by us. So, possibly, or they could continue to park as the village allows on streets for an hour to, on Sunday mornings. So the benefit could be achieved, I think, without doing this.
So consensus says yes?
Consensus, yes, yeah.
Yes, okay, whether the requested area variance is substantial?
Well, we're parking in front yard, we're parking around the long street, we're taking away your front yard.
It's, it's, it's substantial, again, in the issue of the safety and what you're gonna create to a traffic situation, um, at that time on a Sunday. Uh, whether the proposed variance will, so that's a yes, substantial?
Yes.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood? Yes, you said yes on that, and is the alleged difficulty self-created?
Yes.
Yes, it's always self-created. Any other discussion or comment about as we're walking through that? Can I have a motion?
I would make a motion if we deny the variance request.
Okay, Scott makes a motion, we deny it.
I would say, I would actually add to that, that they could come before us with another proposal, not any, um, plans on the second proposal.
Yeah, I mean, everything stands on its own, and so, in its own way, never, are you seconding it?
I'll second it.
Because after you second it, you can then make those comments.
I'll second it, then.
There.
Basically, you come.
Come back with no prejudice.
Yeah, there's no prejudice for coming back with another proposal, and another, another idea how to address the issue. Any other questions or comments about the motion? All favor say aye. Aye. Oppose to say aye? Motion carries. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
How many motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second, all favor say aye. Aye, opposed to say aye? Motion carries.